To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First I want to welcome you all here and I'm glad you enjoyed the dinner. We enjoyed preparing and getting it ready, but these parents and our staff members, we couldn't do what we do without them. I couldn't. They do everything. They send the food out for us and put it up, they cook the food, they're here in support of us and I can't thank them enough because they are wonderful staff and wonderful parents that we have. To get started, the first thing on the agenda that we present was our school designation and that's if you're a focused school, a success school and all of that and as a practice we do not have a school designation because we were considered a new school. When designations come out this year, we should have one. If we meet your targeted index score, we don't have any data to report yet because it hasn't, the state has not released any of that data. Next would be our plans to improve student achievement and several of the things that we are doing for reading is we have hired a part-time interventionist who works three hours a week to do small group interventions with, in reading with our lower grade students, kindergarten through second grade. We also do, we call it Lucy Coffins, but that's just the person who started the whole movement. She works at Columbia University in New York. She has developed a reading program where students are placed in books on their own level and you test every so often to see if they move any levels and I think our third grade teachers tested this past week and most of our kids have moved two levels from the beginning of school and that is wonderful in progress for them to be moving at that pace. We've ordered books for the, this reading program. Each classroom set of books costs about $7,000 because they come with individual titles as well as small group titles and what you do is your kids have a, what we call a bag of books and those books, they have three that they read in during the week. At least one is a nonfiction book which is why most of our testing is going to be is nonfiction. And about 50% of our reading in third through fifth grade should be nonfiction. So we're working that in trying to meet our next generation's standards. For our six through eight students, we have REEQ 180 which Lady of the Period X teaches and she is dynamic. Our children are showing huge gains in scholastic reading inventory from one year to the next. So we're seeing progress. We also do System 44. System 44 is a lower version of REEQ 180. It's for our special needs students. It works with them on decoding words and just a variety of different things for them. Most, a lot of that is computer-based which gives them also a lot of technology skills because when they take the tests now, it's all on the computer. And last year what we found was our students said that they actually liked taking the tests on computers better than paper pencil. So that's good. And like I said, frequent assessment. We are constantly assessing our students to see if we're seeing growth and so far we have been very fortunate that we have been seeing this growth in the first nine weeks of school this year. So we think that what we're doing is working. We are compartmentalizing our third through fifth grades where we have one teacher who works with all third grade students in language arts, another one who does nothing but language arts for fourth and then we have a teacher who shares third and fourth grade and does math and another one who does social studies and science and our social studies and science teacher is focusing a lot on reading comprehension and understanding the text that is nonfiction. So that also plays into us working toward our next gen standards. We are doing, this year we've got two new teachers in math and we'll move on to that. In math, in the lower grades, we are doing number talks. We use Everyday Math, that's the adopted textbook, but we also supplement that with Georgia Math because we have found out that the Everyday Math textbook is not aligned to the new standards. It's, I think we adopted this four, maybe five years ago and with the new standard that's coming out, it just doesn't meet all of the needs. So our teachers went online and did a lot of research and they found where the state of Georgia has developed all of these math activities that correlate directly with the next generation's standards. So they're using that a lot to supplement the math. And then our number talks is just where kids are talking about putting numbers together and breaking them down, tearing them apart, putting them back together. We're teaching them a lot of different ways to work the problems. We teach the standard way of course, but we also pitch a variety of ways so that whatever way that they can do it best, they can use that. Now this year we've just been told that they're not going to be able to use calculators in the elementary grades. Our math textbook has been using calculators quite often. So we're having to back up and refocus on some skills that there may be some gaps in because they use calculators and now they're saying, "I don't remember how to work this on paper." You know, they can fly with calculators. But, so we're working on that. We're working on problem solving because most of your testing is going to be problem solving in as far as two and three step problems. I know that Mr. Lippel showed us a problem the other day in a workshop and the question was, "What is the area of the square?" No picture, just what is the area of the square? And he gives you four numbers to choose from. One number was 27, one was 18, one was 81. Do you remember what the other one might have been? The other one's the wrong number. That's three numbers. What's the answer? You want to know what grade level that is?
Third grade.
Third grade. And so the rigor of the curriculum has to raise because the rigor of the test is way up there and we've got work to do to get there. I think that nationwide, anybody that's giving the smarter balance test has got some work to do to get there. Not just us, not just Clinton County, not just West Virginia, everybody. Because the standards are pretty tough when you look at them and look at what's required in one grade and look at what used to be required. Used to be that would have been about a six grade question. We are doing, focusing a lot of emphasis on our standards-based material, meaning that we are really digging into our next generation's standards and trying to develop activities and problems and everything that goes with those standards and meets that need for us. Another area that we feel is a huge problem is motivation of our elementary students. That's going to be one of our goals this year. You have middle school students a lot of times and I know we've got a great group of students that are here tonight who do a wonderful job. You have a lot of them just on here and they will mark anything. It seems to be very commonplace. So, so we want to do some things to motivate them to do their best. And we're going to do a celebration ceremony every nine weeks where students show improvement and reach their goals. That, that, we'll have a celebration for them. We are doing a student of the week and those students of the week are going to be able to sit at an honors table during lunch that's decorated and got little gift bags and things for them and our parents are taking care of decorating the tables and getting all the gift bags put together. We're going to celebrate student gains on the scholastic math inventory, scholastic reading inventory and dibbles. We're going to do a leadership day where we focus on the cubby habits of children showing, being proactive, sharpening the saw and all of the salmon cubby habits that we do. We are also going to work with our middle school students and have some of them act as mentors to our elementary students and they have to be at a certain level in order to qualify to be a mentor. Then we are doing a leadership class where students plan and work around things such as our Veterans Day assembly, which is huge, our Christmas program, our eighth grade graduation, our awards assembly. They plan the whole program and do all of that for us. So actually thanks a lot to all of the work of me as well, but the purpose in all this is to try to motivate our students to do the very best they possibly can. And we're going to use gift cards for attendance, rewarding them if they are coming to school on time, every day. And we talked about in our faculty senate meeting on Friday about starting a star award program where the principal goes in once a month and gives a star award to students in each class for one for reading, one for math, one for attendance. Do you all remember what that other one was?
Most improved.
Most improved. Was there five or four? But anyhow, we're doing that to try to increase motivation, but this seems to be an area that when we did all of our surveys that we had to do prior to working on our five-year plan and developing our goals and everything, this was an area of weakness for us. So we thought that we would focus on that. One of our innovative programs that we do, but it's not innovative in the sense that we're the only one that does it, but we do the instructional practice inventory and that is, it's called IPI and it's where people go that have been trained to go around to rooms and they check with the students to see how engaged they are and what the level of that engagement is. And the engagement goes from like one to six, six being the highest level and one being the lowest. So we want to improve on our level of engagement. Last year we showed about an eight percent improvement from the beginning of school to the end of school and that, the people will tell you that anything five and above it is a great improvement for a school year. We also do the FOS science. We get that through Marshall University. Shana Pritchard in fifth grade science does that. And then we have Becky Atkins who does six through eight science. Last week they were dissecting sheep eyeballs. So it's all pretty much hands-on now. Then we have, I've talked about the Lucy Coffins reading and writing and one of the things that I'm really excited about is the emissions. What this is, it's through William Jazzewatt University. They, it's done through the computer and Skyping and everything and we have to have Esther Nelson come up and set everything up. And kids are given a project and they worked maybe a couple of weeks on that project researching it. Last year, one of the projects they did was, there's this group of islands and a hurricane is bearing down on these islands. How many people rescue people where you have the least amount of fatalities? And they had to figure all that in and they had to know what the warning signs were and just how many people they could get on a bus and, but they had to do all of that. And this, in the meantime, this lady is on the screen telling them, giving them updates on the weather and it changes all of a sudden. And I had one little girl look at me and this Lucas came up and saw it and one little girl that looked at me and she said, "Oh my God, this is stressing me out." But the kids loved it and what they learned from it was quite good. So those cost $400 a piece and I think we, we also did another one last year on solving a case, crime solving DNA and blood analysis and stuff like that. And they are just dynamic learning environments I think that we've pretty much covered everything. We are looking at adopting what's called the Alice program. You all wanted to know what we're doing for safety concerns. We were trained, well, we had two-hour training last week on this Alice program and it's, there's research out now and I don't know how much you all may have heard about it, that says that if there's an intruder in the building, we've been doing the wrong thing. And we should stop what we have been doing, which is lining the kids up alongside of a wall that where the person, the intruder can't see them and everything and just sitting there being quiet. But now there's research out there that says that you make all the noise you can and if an intruder comes in your room, you throw anything you can get at them. Because when you throw things at them, their accuracy of shooting goes down by about eighty percent. So, and it also talks about you barricade the doors to where if they have, if, in order to get in, they have to crawl through the barricades that you've set up and the purpose being that an intruder wants to make as much, do as much damage as they possibly can in the quickest amount of time. And if they have to go through all that to get at somebody, then they're less apt to do a lot, killing everything. So I was really impressed with that. I talked to the staff about it at the faculty senate meeting and they liked it and for once, this Alice program makes sense to me. And it also talked about if you have an intruder and it's up here, have the other ones evacuate the building, get them out there. Don't just sit there and be sitting ducks for them. So I, I really was impressed with this guy's presentation. We also, when we have people come in the building, they have to come in, of course, to our office area and sign in. They have to sign back out when they leave. They are buzzed in. We try to, all of our doors are kept locked going to the outside. So we try to ensure the safety of our staff and our students at all times. However, I'd go on and say that usually though, when you have an intruder who's bound and determined to get into your building, we're going to get in there. That's just like the guy at Sandy Hook, he shot the glass doors out. So, you know, you just do everything you can possibly do to deter someone once they get in and from getting in. Health-wise, we have a nutritionist who comes in and visits our second grade classrooms and works with them on eating balanced meals. And we have a WBU extension agent who works with third, fourth and fifth grade students on healthy habits. We do jump rope for heart. We do jam and minnit and we try to get our kids as active as possible. Our needs. We really need another custodian. I think, I think I tell you all this every year. The square foot of our building is 72,000 square feet. Seventy-five thousand square feet allows you to have a fourth custodian. We're 3,000 square feet from that fourth one and we need it. This building is way too big for any custodian. I don't care if they're the best in the world, the three custodians to take care of it. We just can't get it all done. Mrs. Lucas has been very generous in, when I need one, giving me a sub-custodian for a few days and letting it through some of the things. I mean, that's just like cleaning the windows. There's so many windows in this school that there's no way they can get it all done. And they're focused on taking the trash out, sweeping the floors and mopping, much less cleaning windows. We are in dire need of a set of bleachers at the football field. We are the only school in the county that has to use portable bleachers. I've priced a set that's also portable, but that will meet our needs and it will cost us about $20,000. So if there's any financial help that you all can give us on that, that would be great. We appreciate it. Because we just don't have enough space and we don't have enough space to put real bleachers in that are stationary. So we need that very much. I think this set that I priced seats about 180 people and it is, like I said, it is affordable because we use that for softball and baseball too. So we've got to have something that is. And I'm speaking for the entire county, not just our school. We need more technology people in our school. Two guys cannot do it all. Technology has grown so fast and so, it's so far above so our heads that we've got to have help with this or we're going to be left behind. We're being left behind because we do not have the technology specialists located within the school. Two guys servicing the entire county. I've got computers that we ordered for a classroom. They've been in since the beginning of school year. They've never been delivered. Because they have other priorities. I'm not saying that they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's just that you have different priorities that come up. One day our security cameras went out. Well, that was a priority. We had to have those up. So they had to stop what they were doing and come and take care of our security cameras. So it depends on where those priorities lie as to what they do. But what it's causing is, we've got a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but they just, they can't get to it because they're busy putting out fires all over the county with technology. And if there's one thing that you guys can do that will help us, it's to put some more technology people to work. I mean, if, if I had to point out one thing, Betsy Dudley is here and she worked at West Hanlon last year. Now, West Hanlon has a person on site. She said she never had to wait for anything to be done. That's because there was someone there all the time. We go waiting forever and it's simply because, like I said, they prioritize and they have to work with it. So that would be my biggest suggestion is that you hire some more people for that and you find the money for that. Because if not, all of our students in this county are going to lose out on the technology tonight. And that's where it's at now. That's, that's the whole thing. There's, if we don't keep up with it, we're lost. And that's my presentation. Surely you all have any questions?
Well, I'd like to come along on the tape maybe in that direction.
We, we are working hard. I think this, this staff is an excellent staff. When I go with Bill Law Cruz and go into classrooms, they are all working very hard at teaching our kids. And that's what it's all about.
Now, have you mentioned in the reading materials a certain percentage of the sciences? Do you, do you have someone here to tell us maybe what some of the subjects are in that?
Is the, the emissions?
No, the, the, just any reading material that you would have as, as extra reading material in the sciences. What are some of the subjects?
Oh, our science teachers, have you ordered a science magazine? You did, didn't you? Our science teachers have ordered a scholastic, excuse me, science magazine that they get once a week. I think it's once a week. Most of them are. They are, we've ordered a lot of books that are nonfiction that deal with science.
That's what I'm getting at. What are, what are some of the subject matters in the sciences, in those supplementary readings?
Do you all have?
Deepersand is what's on the right now, what some of us are looking at in a lot of different grade levels, are the human body systems, and some of the books that come along with the text are leveled, so it would go along with their length, our reading length charts.
A lot of the set of books that I've ordered for the second through fifth grade classrooms have a lot of science books in them because that's the bulk, science and social studies are a lot of your nonfiction reading.
Do they touch a lot on problem solving?
Some of the aspects of science do, but not all of it.
That seems to be lacking in our reading.
Yes, yes, it does. You're welcome. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.